Planning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Thursday, March 18th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can raise your hand by dialing *9, and to lower your hand, you dial *9 again. Please note that this meeting is being videotaped for a possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser has been excused. Chief Kudrick?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro has been excused. Councilwoman Richmond has been excused. Mr. Seaman has been excused. Ms. Casper has been excused. Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those serving both here and abroad. The chief, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice Okay, thank you. All right, we have approval of minutes. We have approval of minutes for a regular meeting, February 18th, 2021, eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, Mr. Dorado, Chief Kudrick, and Mr. Cristiano.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Kudrick.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I missed you.
It's okay.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
And Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay. I have approval of minutes, regular meeting, March 4th, 2021, eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, and myself.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, we have vouchers.
I have no vouchers.
Correspondence.
I have no correspondence.
Okay, get into resolutions. We got a resolution, case number S... Sorry?
Did you notice my change in the agenda today? Because 7/11, we don't have.
Okay.
So the only, we do have...
That was another sent out.
I don't have it, I even looked back at my emails.
7/11 was sent out, then Mario Pretto was put on.
Right.
Got it. Okay, go with the submission waivers.
No, Mario Pretto, we can do. That was sent out earlier today.
SD.
That's the cabin, that's the cabin one. Okay.
No. No, that's, that's the lot. I see Asbury Avenue.
Minor subdivision?
There was a minor subdivision, they created two lots. That one was, that one's done early, so, you know, that was just two weeks ago. So if the board hasn't had an opportunity to look at it, you can do it at your next meeting, you're still within the timeframe.
I, I missed it, so...
No, you were here, you were here, Chairman.
No, no, I meant, I missed looking at it.
Resolution, it only went out today, so...
Yeah, I see it here. Okay.
If you want to hold it...
We'll move it to the next meeting.
Fine, thank you. Then we're up to submission waivers.
Okay, submission waiver, case number SP-1082. Richard Said.
Hold on one second. I'm trying to see who's here for that case.
While you're doing that, I'm going to transition to the phone for the audio, getting a little bit of digitization, so...
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Just one minute till the chairman gets back on.
Eileen, can you get my cellphone on?
I can hear you.
Hey, Brian, you sound fine on our end, at least on my end.
Can we proceed?
One second.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give it a shot, go ahead.
Okay, we have Mr. Montenegro as the attorney for this applicant.
The applicant is Richard Seeb, and we have online Richard Seeb and our engineer, Bill Chandler. The property in question is block 49 lots 24 and 24.01, located at 207 and 209 Squonkam Farmingdale Road. Property is located in the SED Zone, which is Special Economic Development Zone, and is a permitted use.
Mr. Montenegro?
Yes.
Since we're here for submission waivers, just to let you know, what we normally do is, after your, your intro, we kind of turn it over to our engineer, who will identify all the submission waivers and let you know if she has a problem with any of them, and then you can respond, if necessary, to, to her.
Okay, terrific.
Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a February 18th, 2021 review letter where the submission waivers are itemized in number three. A lot of the improvements on this site exist, it's just going to be addition gravel. So having said that, my office had the opportunity to review the waivers with Mr. Chandler, and accordingly, a lot of this list has been reduced because the applicant has agreed to provide several items. So with that, they are seeking waivers from checklist item 13, item 15, item 16, item 58, 69, 86, and 88. And given the nature of this application, I take no exception to the granting of those waivers, subject to the providing of those others listed in my report, for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Is that, is that consistent with your understanding, Mr. Montenegro?
If Laura could just repeat that, if we were to comply with your request, the waivers that you just listed, 13, 16, 58, 59, 86, 88, would be approved?
Would be granted, the waivers and the balance of the items would be provided.
Okay. I would defer Mr. Chandler, did you hear that?
Mr. Chandler, let me just swear you in, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
William H. Chandler Jr., PEP.
And Mr. Montenegro, can you just very briefly qualify Mr. Chandler?
Chandler, can you advise the board as to your background education and your degrees? Are you a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Licensed professional engineer?
Yes.
And you've testified before various boards in the past?
Yes, as well as a certified municipal engineer, certified public works manager. I've played the role, as Ms. Newman has, as a planning board review engineer for other consulting firms, as well as being a municipal engineer for Manchester Township for 13 years.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, do we accept?
We'll accept your credentials. We do.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chandler, what's your response to Ms. Newman?
Um, she is rather, rather quick, could, um, she just slowly repeat the item numbers that I, I kind of have them here, but she did go rather briefly of the, the items that she's agreed to waive, and then the other items that I, I believe we agreed to provide.
So the waivers would be for item 13, item 15, item 16, item 58, 69, 86, and 88.
Yeah, I think that is the, the waivers that we discussed on the phone with your, your associate, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay, so if, with that, with that agreement in place, I think, Mr. Montenegro, the board's prepared to vote.
I just want to confirm with Mr. Chandler that the information that you're required to provide, we can do that, and then have these others waived?
Yes, um, some of the other items are really just kind of, you know, stationary in nature, and then the one or two items that I did have some questions, Jordan, from Ms. Newman's office was kind enough to review the requirements of those, and for lack of a better term, walk me through it.
So your response is yes?
Yes.
Based upon the foregoing, Mr. Chairman and board members, the applicant would agree with the recommendations and suggestion of the borough engineer, planning board engineer.
Okay, okay, Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready for a vote there.
Okay. Sounds good. If we don't have any questions, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you so much, enjoy your evening.
Good night, sir.
See you soon, thank you.
Okay, next submission waiver is for case number SP-1012A.
Okay, that's Yoso Brothers, is that, is that your client, Mr. Sardo?
Correct, good evening, Mr. Cucero and board members, John Sardo from the law firm of Jordan, a talent and CSLB applicant.
Okay, you know the process, Mr. Sardo, so we'll turn it over to our board engineer. Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, similar to the prior application, the submission waivers are itemized in item three of our February 24th, 2021 review letter. I would note that this is also an amended application, so some of these waivers, like Woodlands Management, there is no tree removal that is proposed with this application. So again, given the nature of it, and given that it is an amended application, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application
Okay, I don't know, you probably just have an agreement with that, right, Mr. Sardo?
It's, yeah, no problem with that, and Patrick Ward from Inside Engineering's here, but it sounds like he won't have to come off of mute to respond to that, so...
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, our board engineer agrees, recommends all the requested submission waivers, so I think we're ready to vote. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, if we don't have any...
I missed whoever gave the second on that.
Joe Cristiano.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, next submission waiver is case number SP-993A, New Jersey Natural Gas Company.
Just need to take yourself off, you, oh, there you are. Okay, go ahead.
You're on mute, Ms. Skidmore, we're not hearing you. There you go. Now we can.
For the third time, good evening. Nancy Skidmore from the law firm of Colonel Foley, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, New Jersey Natural Gas Company.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Laura, as is our custom. Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the submission waivers are specifically outlined in item four of our February 24th, 2021 review letter, and again, it does appear that there are a lot of waivers, however, this is also an amended application, which is basically a one-story addition and some accessory components to that. So given the nature of this application, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Okay, any comment to that, Ms. Skidmore?
No, that's, that's fantastic, thank you very much, Ms. Newman.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready for a vote.
I don't know where the chairman went, give him a minute.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, Laura has recommended all the requested submission waivers, so I think we're at a place where we can take a motion and a vote.
Just, just before you vote, Mr. Cucero, I just want to clarify. Ms. Newman, were the, the waivers were requesting and the ones we originally identified, and then all those that are listed that we had missed in your correspondence dated February 24th, is that right? That is correct, all the items listed in four of our report, yes. That's what I thought you meant, I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Okay.
Brian, you're muted.
I know, I keep getting kicked off.
Oh, no, now we can hear you.
You're good.
Okay, maybe you'll stay now. Everybody else is kind of frozen. All right, well, to entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio? Did we lose? Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
I'm sorry, Eileen, I keep getting kicked off. I'm gonna have to try to use my cellphone for the audio.
Okay.
Do you know my cellphone number, so you can let me into the meeting?
I believe I do.
Okay. Hey, Ron?
Yes.
So the, the video here is, is just taking an extreme fit. Do, do, do we want to continue with these next two applications, with me potentially compromised?
Well, you're not com... Well, let me just state the law, and then what you're comfortable with. Under the law, the emergency regulations, which have been promulgated in the New Jersey Administrative Code, only people who are providing sworn testimony are required to be on camera. So there's not a legal requirement that you be on camera, however, there's still a legal requirement that you be present for the entire application if you are going to vote. What you would perhaps miss is if there are, you know, exhibits that are being put on screen, although all exhibits were submitted 20, 48 hours in advance, and the plans were, you know, distributed to the board. So you do have the plans in front of you, you would just miss, you know, the, you know, the, the depiction of the plans on the screen tonight. So there's not a legal prohibition, but it certainly is up to you as to whether you feel comfortable or not.
Yeah, all right, let's continue.
Okay.
I have a, I have a good audio connection now.
Okay, all right, Mr. McKenna?
Okay, we're up to case number SD-2928FA?
And I've lost Mr. McKenna.
Maybe it's not on play again.
There he is, okay.
Okay, Mr. McKenna, we're ready for you now.
You're, you're muted.
I apologize, my computer just went out, so I, I'm calling for my cellphone now.
You're fine, thank you.
Wait a minute, it may be coming up now, excuse me, just one moment. I think I'm okay.
But now you have, you have to shut off one or the other because you're getting feedback.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Mr. McKenna.
All right, thank you very much, I apologize for any inconvenience. Good evening, this is Edward McKenna, McKenna, DuPont, Stone and Washburn, we've just lost Kerry Higgins, as many of you may know, she's...
I wouldn't say you're losing her.
Well, no, I think it's a great, a great step for her, and I loved Kerry, she was with me for 24 years. We're very, very happy for her, believe, but I'm here tonight on, on an application for a subdivision, major subdivision, that actually was granted by the board in 2013. It's a 53.2 acre tract in the SED Zone. The major subdivision was granted, as I said, in 2013. It was, the owner failed to perfect the subdivision, and we're here to ask the board to approve it once again. There is absolutely no change to the earlier plan, the conditions on the site are essentially exactly the same. It will be 90% warehouse space, 10% office space, and we will be meeting with the board, the representatives of the town, next week, the township, on a concept plan also, so that we can, again, make applications for site plans for individual lots. There is a detention basin located on the property that will be immediately adjacent to Vandavere Road. The purpose of the detention basin is actually merely to collect the road water, and, and then we'll proceed from there. What I'd like to do, if the board, if it pleased the board, is to call William Wentzian from Abington Engineering as my first witness.
Hey, Bill, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Name is William T. Wentzian, the last name is W-E-N-T-Z-I-E-N. Mr. Chairman, I assume everyone's familiar with Mr. Wentzian?
You could just briefly qualify him.
I'd be more than happy to. Not a problem. I am a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, a professional planner in the state of New Jersey, principal of the firm with Abington Engineering. I have been before many boards, including this board. I am also currently serving as the planning board engineer for the Borough Freehold in the Borough Pemberton.
Great, we'll accept your credentials, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wentzian, you were in fact with the engineer that prepared the plans when this subdivision was approved by the township back in 2013, is that correct? Yes, I was. And would you recite for the board the nature of the application, the number of lots, et cetera, and then we can, we can proceed from there? Sure. The, the nature of the application was, as, as you heard in the opening, the site is just a hair over 53.2 acres, and involves two lots. One lot being 36.03, which is an existing lot that has an existing industrial building on it. The balance of the site is the larger lot, known as Lot 36.04. The, this, the application involves those two lots together to combine an industrial subdivision, which in essence, the purpose of which is just to create lots, which will involve future site plans on those lots, once those lots become perfected. To, to allow... To, to allow for the lots to exist, the plan you had before you proposes a site circulation road through the site, which will feed off of Vandevere Road. It will loop through the site and connect to an existing terminus on, it's called Industrial Court, which is the, the, uh, end of the circulation road which is put on, I, I refer to the adjacent as Section One of this industrial complex, and this is, this is like a Section Two, which is the way it was originally presented back in 2013. And that will result in the creation of eight lots. One of the lots will contain the stormwater infiltration basin you had mentioned. The purpose of that basin is solely to address stormwater from the proposed looped road, which would allow the subdivision lots to be created. And the balance of that lot is, uh, delineated wetlands, which is permitted and has an extension of a permit, uh, on record. The rest of the lot would just create seven lots for future, the, for future development of industrial use within those lots. That pretty much is the nature of the application. It is exactly the same in technical nature and presentation as was previously approved by this board in 2013. And, and there have been no changes as far as the site conditions are concerned, correct? I would, I would, in fairness, note one, the, the general answer to your question is there has been no changes. But as was properly cited in, uh, Laura's report and the engineer's report, that existing lot Thirty-six-point-zero-three that I referred to, the smaller lot that has an existing industrial building on it, since, since the prior, there has been a little bit of additional work that was done on that site and properly noted, we need to revise on that plan. Uh, if I, and that would be the only change that I'm aware of to the site since 2013. And, um, we've been through the, uh, through Ms. Newman's letter, and, um, there were a number of suggestions as far as modifications to our plans that, uh, that she would be seeking, and you and I have reviewed them together and, and find those, uh, those amendments to our plans to be acceptable, correct? Yes. And there was one issue that I, you and I did discuss, and that was the issue of soil borings in the detention basin, correct? Yeah, I, 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 I say yes to the latter, and I wanted to pose one, uh, thing, uh, tonight, if I could, and that is, there was a request, uh, when we did the original design of the basin, which is still the design of the basin, as, as we would, as we would design it to meet the standards for the runoff from the road. Since, since the time we did that, there's been no change to the site, the soils of the site or the condition of the site. There was a request about possibly redoing the boring and perk tests in the area of the basin. I, I would just offer that, since nothing's changed, it would, it would, it, it, I don't think it's going to change anything, and I, I would request if we could just go with the borings as they were, unless, unless I hear different. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add to the description of the site to the board? I, yeah, I, I can do one, I, I would point out one other level, a, a comment to provide an additional level of comfort since it has been noted, we've been going through this report in preparation for this meeting, is that the, the change that was noted on existing Lot Thirty-six-point-zero-three, that when Laura mentioned it in the report, it was raised in two ways. The first was, you, we would, we need you to update your maps to reflect the conditions on that lot as it is. But secondly, because those changes are there to provide a re-evaluation that the, that the new proposed condition of the new area of what is, it's going to be called Lot Five, that is a result of this subdivision, that even with those changes, that it does not create an impervious, uh, variance. I can advise you that we've done enough checking to that, we've been to the site already, update those. We will provide that information, but I can advise you that we, we'll be able to provide information that says it does not create anything necessary to highlight regarding impervious coverage. Mr. Wentzian, one other thing I'd like to address, and that is the delay and, and, uh, and the failure on, on the part of the property owners to, uh, to perfect the subdivision. And as I understand it, uh, there were two issues involved. One was the change of ownership, but more importantly, there was environmental cleanup that had to be conducted on the property that took us slightly over two years, that prevented them from going ahead and perfecting the subdivision, correct? Yes, we've been advised that, uh, a, a firm, and for that was, was utilized to provide for an environmental cleanup on that property. We've been advised that it has been gone through. Okay, and, and they've been cleared by the Department of Art and Mental Protection, correct? Correct.
Well, we, just on the, um, on, on the cleanup, I mean, it proceeded pursuant to a, an LSRP? I guess?
I think it may even, um, I'd have to defer, but I, well, I think that, Mr. Chair, what happened was, it was, it was not a major cleanup, it was essentially, um, there was, um, there were vehicles, farm vehicles that were left on the property, and there were, um, debris and things such as that that had worn out over the period of years, and that, that was the cause of the environmental cleanup. But, um, my understanding from the owner, and we'll be happy to produce, uh, evidence of that to the municipality, we have a meeting with the municipality next week, of the, uh, successful cleanup.
Well, the only reason I was asking about the DEP is usually now you get an RAO, which is issued by the LSRP.
Right.
Doesn't really go through the, uh, the DEP. So whatever it is, if you have an RAO, if you have an, a NFA, whatever it is that you have, whatever are the letters you want to put together, you know, just submit it as part of the approval if you, if you gain one tonight.
You know what, I, I apologize. I, I do have notes on that. It was an LSRP, and we do have an RAO.
Okay, all right, so if you could just submit that?
We would. I, I just want to, I was going through my papers at the same time, and yes, there was an LSRP involved, and those, those issues were, can be provided. And, um, again, I don't, I don't mean to oversimplify the application. Um, it's just that the, the application had been granted in the past. This is really more of an application to, um, to have it approved once again with the exact same plan with virtually, uh, no changes other than a minor change on the one lot that Mr. Wentzian suggested. Um, I know it's been reviewed by, uh, by Ms. Newman, and I do not sense any objections or problems from the CME report. Um, so I would open it up to the board as far as any of the board members have any questions or concerns.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just wait on the borings.
Okay, do we want to square you in first, Ms. Newman?
Sure.
It's better with volume. Uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Um, so, so, Mr. Chairman, while I recognize that maybe the underlying soil conditions haven't changed, the borings are, you know, at least eight years old or nine years old, so it is, it relates to establishing depth, uh, water table. Um, that's the whole reliance of their stormwater design. I would like to see new borings conducted.
And, and we-
Okay.
We wouldn't have any problem with that. I don't mean to suggest for a moment that it was, uh, other than just a, a request, so certainly if, uh, if Ms. Newman thinks it's appropriate, then we would be happy to, uh, to get to do the borings. Yeah, and if I may add in, I only, I only brought it up as a request, absolutely, there's no problem. It wasn't a question of not making sure everything was okay. If the borings are still being required, we will provide those.
Yeah, and it's nine years, so it's almost ten, so I appreciate that. And the only other question I have, Mr. Wentzian, is this a municipal roadway, or will it be a private roadway?
The only thing I can say to that is, whatever's going to happen with it is exactly as, as it would have been in 2013. It hasn't come up in particular here. We were just riding to reapply the application exactly as it was before.
So was it a public street then, or was it a private street?
I, I don't know, I'd have to defer to Mr. McKenna maybe a little bit on that, but there was no change from anything as we presented the information. I, um, I, unfortunately, I did not handle the application back then, but as I indicated, we do have a meeting with the municipality on, it's actually a, a next Monday. So I think we'd be happy to address that issue at that point in time. And, uh, with our concept plan, if that's okay. I, I, I just don't know, because the, the other part of the roadway there that's called Industrial Court, um, my understanding was that that was a municipal road, but I, I have not been able to confirm that.
Yeah, I, I- McKenna, if I could just interject, the, the meeting that you have with the township on Monday is a concept plan meeting with the zoning board. So whether or not the roads are public or private is not something that's going to come up in a concept plan review with the zoning board for a use on one of these particular lots. So it's something that probably should be vetted out, for sure.
Okay.
Well, I guess my question for, for Laura is, what would, is there a difference in how the plan would be approved, if it's public or private? Is there something they would have to do if it's public?
If it's public, I think it would be as it's currently drawn, which is within a right of way, whereas sometimes when they're private, they're giving, they're assigned their own lot number.
Okay, so is there a way that we can work that, if there's an approval tonight, is there a way we can work that into the approval, uh, take that into account?
Yeah, and my recommendation would be if industrial way is in fact a public street, and this is the extension of that, then this should be a public road.
Okay, is that acceptable, Mr. McKenna?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Newman, you have any other comments?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. McKenna, does that conclude your testimony?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Yeah, I'll open it up to the board. Does the board have any comments?
Chairman, uh, Tannenhouse?
Mr. Leggio?
As far as the, the tenants that are going to potentially be going into this, uh, uh, build-out in the future, uh, it's, it's eight years old, has, is there going to be a new traffic, uh, study done, or are we, are we concerned with Vandevere, where it meets up to Howell Road? Do we, is there any concern with, uh, you know, exiting out that way and, you know, stop sign? I know there's no light there, and, you know, there's, there's minimal shoulder on, on the road. Is that going to be an issue in the future when this is fully, fully built out?
Okay.
I mean, I can just, I jump in. The short answer is, this is the subdivision, they're going to have to come back for individual site plans, at which time each individual user is going to have to justify traffic, safety, ingress, egress, all that. This is just subdivision.
Yeah. If I may- That would be, that would be the future, for sure. If I may, I was going to say exactly what, uh, Jennifer said. Each site, as it comes in, we'll have to go through the complete site plan application process, which will include, which will include those items that was raised by, by, by the board member.
Okay.
Okay.
Steve, you're muted.
Now, I was replying back to John. Part, Howell Road is partially weight limited from Vandevere all the way out to five-twenty-four. So, anything larger than four tons, thousand pounds, is allowed in that section of, of Howell Road?
It is allowed, okay.
Not allowed.
Not allowed, going, but going back to thirty-three.
Four-ton weight limit from Vandevere
to five-twenty-four, okay.
Thank you, Chief.
So they have no choi- anything over four tons has no choice but to go out to-
Go right on.
To Route thirty-three.
Go right on Howell Road from Vandevere. But I think there's some public concern. Can, Ron, you explain that since this is a previously approved our position here on, on the planning board, what it is, right?
Well, as, the fact that it was previously approved, you could reach a different decision. Uh, however, the fact that it was previously approved didn't mean that it was vetted, you know, once, once before, but I think the most important part of it is what exactly we're looking at, which is just the creation of lots, not uses, not ingresses or egresses, number of parking spaces or tenants. Yeah, a- as was said, this, this is a multi-part process. So the lots are being created tonight, and then as individual lots are being developed, they'll go to the appropriate board, whether it be this board or the zoning board.
Does anybody else have anything else, any questions?
Oh, I have one more question, uh, Chair. The, the retention basin, that's, that's what, approximately twenty, what's it, twenty-three acres? They were saying?
Actually, excuse me, the, the detention basin is a very, very small portion of of the twenty-three acres, it's almost entirely wetlands.
Okay.
The, the detention basin is down at the bottom of the property, or it's, it's a proportion of the property that's immediately adjacent to Vandevere Road. And, um, I, I defer to Mr. Wentzian as far as the size of the property, but if you get a chance to look at the map, the detention basin is, as I indicated, just adjacent to Vandevere Road, and it's a very small portion of- Yeah, I, I was trying to do some quick scaling on the plan. Out of the overall lot, eight, basin area itself is about one-point-five acres.
And as far as maintenance on the, the, the retention basin, that's going to be on the, on the owner's responsibility, not the township, correct?
Right.
All right.
Okay. All right, if we don't have any more questions, Mr. McKenna can open it up to the public?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened up the hearing to the members of the public for any questions or comments on this application. If you have any questions or comments, please use the raise your hand feature. You will be brought into the meeting one at a time. You will need audio and video. You will be sworn in, and you will have to give your name and address. Once again, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public with any questions or comments on the application for Vandevere Partners. If you have any questions or comments, please use the raise your hand feature. I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand.
All right, we'll give it another thirty seconds. And then we'll close it.
Last call for any questions or comments on this application. Please use the raise your hand feature before the chairman closes the meeting to the public.
Okay, we'll close, we're now closing the public portion of this application. Counselor? Do you want to?
No, I'm, um, satisfied. We're just, um, going to ask the board for a motion.
Okay. Then I'll make a, I'll, I'll ask the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case number SD dash two-nine-two-eight FA, Vandevere Industrial Partners, for a final major subdivision.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bivai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
No.
Mr. Ten, uh, Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a pleasure.
Good evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again.
Okay, next case is case number SD dash two-nine-nine-three, McDermott and Son LLC.
One minute. Mr.- Mr. Farrell, do you have members that I need to bring into the meeting, any professionals?
Yes, I do, I have two, I have. Patrick Ward.
Who I don't see on the call.
You should be joining.
Okay, and I have Mr. Savarice.
Yes. He's on the call.
Okay, so we're just waiting for Patrick Ward.
He said he's having a hard time logging in, he was a previous panelist and he's having a hard time logging in.
Yeah, he, he got kicked off a few times.
There he is, he's on.
Okay, he's on, all right.
Okay, Counselor?
Good evening, one second. All right, good evening, my name is Ryan Farrell of Bathgate Wagner &amp; Wolf, on behalf of the applicant McDermott and Son. Representing McDermott and Son is Kevin McDermott, who is also on the call. This is a major subdivision application. The subject property is a corner lot in the R50 Zone District. It includes 300 feet of frontage, 300 feet of frontage along the north side of East Fourth Street and 150 feet of frontage. Along the west side of Roosevelt Avenue. It contains a vacant one-story building and a second building foundation. Along the east Fourth Street side frontage. The applicant is seeking to remove all existing site improvements and receive approval for, to subdivide the property. Into six new lots consisting of one 5,000 square feet lot. Two 7,500 square foot lots and three 10,000 square foot lots. All of the proposed lots are to contain a future one-story dwelling. With a one-car garage area and having access by paved driveway. And there will be service by municipal water and sanitary sewer systems. There are two variant. Weight variances that we are requesting. One of them is variance from section 188 dash 63B, which is the requirement of a permanent 50-foot wide permit or buffer easement. Which accompanies all major subdivisions. The other relates to the requirement for sidewalks. At this time, I'd like to call the first witness, which is Patrick Ward of Inside Engineering.
Mr. Farrell, just before you do that, I just want to get on the record. This particular project had sort of some concurrent paths it was taking. One of them was the submission of a building permit for a single-family residence, which was separate and apart from this application. My understanding is the applicant no longer is pursuing that, is that correct?
Well, he has a single, I, I don't know if that's correct, he has a single minor subdivision application currently pending for the board for the adjacent property. If that's what you're referring to.
No, Ron, he's referring to the application for building a single family home on this property. That application is.
Mr. McDermott, I just need to swear again first, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state and swear your name for us.
Kevin McDermott, CEO of McDermott and Son LLC. K E D I N M C D E R M O T T.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. McDermott.
That application for building the single-family home on this lot is not, not in progress. It, we're waiting for this hearing to end and the subdivision to be complete before I would build any homes on this lot.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. McDermott. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Farrell.
At this time, I'd like to call the first witness, Patrick Ward of Inside Engineering, certified engineer and planner.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and swear your name for the record.
Sure, Patrick Ward, W A R D with Inside Engineering.
And would the board like me to qualify, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ward, good evening, are you a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And are you a licensed professional engineer?
Yes.
And where do you work?
Inside Engineering and Wall Township.
And is it true that Inside Engineering is the proved engineer for this application?
That is correct.
And have you testified in front of a board before?
I have, including this one as recently as February.
Okay, and would it be fair to say you've testified many times?
Uh, yes.
Okay, is that sufficient for the board?
Well, it's for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Farrell did set this up nicely in terms of location, but just to reiterate a couple of things. We're at 25 East Fourth Street, we're at the intersection of East Fourth Street and Roosevelt Avenue. Subject property is 50,000 square feet. And when the R50 zone, the property is in a neighborhood in town. Some, some known as Freewood Acres, it's just to the east of Route 9. The neighborhood surrounding the property is fully developed with single-family dwellings and lots arranged in a grid-like system. So what I'll do now is I'm going to share our exhibit, and I'm not sure what this is marked as, Mr. Farrell.
Yeah, which one are you trying to?
It'll be the, the site rendering.
The colorized one?
Yes.
A9?
Yes.
The A9, and I'll also have our plan set up to describe the existing conditions, Mr. Vannau. As well, okay, let me share.
That would be A3.
A3, okay.
I'm trying to get a visual on this, is this the existing property of the Russian Club? The large, the large building with the blue, with the blue roof?
Yes, that is correct.
The whole corner, correct?
Yes. Okay, so this is. Our sheet C200 from A3. What the applicant seeking is approval to subdivide existing lot 9.01 into six lots for residential use. With one new house to be built on each of the proposed lots. Mr. Farrell walked through the sizes of each of the lots. Or we're renumbering them from 9.02 to 9.07. And the geometry of each lot is complying with the R50 zoning requirement. So in terms of existing site conditions. As Mr. Kudrick just stated, property today is developed with that large one-story masonry building, the Russian Club, former Russian Club. That was formerly a non-residential use. This building and any other building remnants, there is a, a portion of foundation remnants on the property are proposed to be removed as part of the application. The northwest corner of the property in the, the notched area contains trees and some vegetated overgrowth. As you can see on this picture of feet, there is a, an existing drainage. To the township, running north to south that bisects the property today and connects to existing storm infrastructure in East Fourth Avenue. The property is currently served by a public, public sewer and water, electric, and will continue to do so. It also has gas available. So what we're proposing. This is our A9, the, the, the color rendering of the site and the future condition with the homes. We're proposing six new lots, all meeting the minimum lot geometry requirements generally for the R50 zone. Starting at the west side of the property, we have two new lots, lots 9.02 and 9.03, each to be 10,000 square feet. They are 50 by 100. In the middle of the property, we have proposed lots 9.04 and 9.05, which are both to be 7,500 square feet, and those are both 50 by 150. That drainage easement that I mentioned earlier. Is still, still unchanged, and it'll be, it'll split or straddles the new line between lot 9.03 and 9.04. At the corner, we have a 100 foot by 100 foot lot 9.06, which is 10,000 square feet. And then finally, lot 9.07 is 5,000 square feet, that is a 50 by 100 lot. So as I said, the applicant is proposing to construct new single-story homes on each of, on each lot as part of this application. Mr. Savarice is with us, he'll testify to the different dwelling designs. But as you'll see, we're proposing a variety of house designs on the property to fit in with the surrounding development pattern of Freewood Acres. We acknowledge that this application qualifies for the required perimeter buffer per the township ordinance. But we, as you can see here, we are not proposing one for this application. I will explain the reasons and justification for not providing the buffer when I get to my planning testimony after Mr. Savarice. In terms of other improvements as part of the application, we are proposing to remove several trees for the construction of the new dwellings. We have a woodland management plan within our set. But we're also proposing to keep trees in this northwest corner of the property, and that's identified here as the green, darker green area. We note in the engineering review that there are concerns with some of the trees that are to remain on the property outside of that dark green area. We're willing to work with the board professionals to propose. A proper tree removal and tree preservation plan at the property to make sure sound trees remain where possible. And any damaged or potentially dying trees are removed as needed. The applicant will be mitigating the tree removal with a contribution to the tree. We are proposing a series of street trees along East Fourth, the East Fourth Street frontage, as you can see. And we're proposing to keep existing trees along the Roosevelt Avenue frontage to meet the ordinance requirement for street trees. We also note in the engineering review letter, the comment about providing one additional street tree, and we'll be happy to provide. After consultation as recently as today with board professionals and the township engineering office. The applicant has decided that he will provide sidewalk along both frontages. And new curb as requested on East Fourth Street. So in terms of curving, there is existing curb on Roosevelt Avenue, it's tough to see on here. But it is noted on our survey and on our plans, there is no curb on East Fourth Avenue today. So the applicant will install that as part of this application if approved. And with that, and now that sidewalk is, is being proposed, the driveways, as you see here, will require concrete driveway heparits. So as to provide continuity along that side.
Mr. McNee, before you. Mr. Ward, just before you continue.
Sure.
You're talking about relief and also the contribution to the, to the tree fund, just to the board's professionals. And you wouldn't have had the benefit of this, we've had a lot of experience with our tree replacement ordinance recently. Laura and Shari, is, is that pursuant to the section that actually is, it's not as of right, the board has to permit it, and there's some proofs that are necessary?
Yeah, um, but Patrick, I'm pretty sure you guys were just about there and, and won't need to pay.
I guess I, I, I stated that just in case there were potentially any changes as a condition of approval. I, I, in my initial or our most recent plan submission, I agree with you, but.
All right, then that's the way we're going to, if, if there's no tree removal at the moment, that's just the way I think the board has to consider it.
Ron, there's.
I'm not saying no tree removal, but no, it's within the parameters set up by the, by the ordinance.
Okay, and, and that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we, if there were any changes, if, you know, post approval, we would.
Believe me, this is an easier way for you to proceed.
I, I appreciate it, Mr. McKenna, I certainly do.
Already went, they got to an entire.
Okay, just getting back to the improvements, and I appreciate the interjection there. The sidewalk eliminates a previously requested design width, so the board notes that in the engineering review letter, that is no longer a requested design width. In addition, and in lieu of providing the perimeter buffer for this major subdivision. We are proposing a 10-foot wide line of evergreen plantings, as I'm following with my cursor. On A9, along the north property. The goal of this buffer is to provide a solid evergreen screen along any neighboring rear property lines, which would be to the north here. Could be the, the rear of Lot 12 or the property to our north, and also the rear of any of our newly proposed. In terms of stormwater management, most of the property due to existing topography, except the very small sliver in the southwest corner. Slopes to the rear of the property. And within this drainage easement to the north, beyond our property, there is an existing inlet. That is in the easement. So it's our understanding that most of the property slopes in that direction, and ultimately. The runoff gets there, however, in the proposed condition. We are proposing new development, and initially, and as most recently submitted, the, the plan showed a similar drainage pattern to that rear inlet. Again, we acknowledge the engineering report comments and feel that after a closer review, we can modify the proposed grading. To send nearly all roof runoff from five of the homes, except for Lot 9.07 here, just due to existing contours. Towards East Fourth Street, so most of the roof runoff and the immediate sides of the homes, we can, we can slope the property such that that runoff heads. Towards East Fourth Street, not to the north. And allow the rear yards to continue to flow north towards the inlet. In addition, if, if the township will allow, and if the board will allow, we, we are willing to also install a new inlet. In the rear of the property within the drainage easement. That'll connect immediately to that existing pipe to collect any low areas from our rear yards, so as to prevent. Any accumulation of runoff due to the new plantings, and also to prevent our new runoff heading further north and impacting any property. You know, that, that's, it's kind of a testifying to the design that you can't see, so we're happy to work with the board engineer on this design to her satisfaction. As a condition of approval, we happy to revise the plans. The project as designed now and, and as it will be designed in the future is under an acre of disturbance and therefore not major development. In terms of parking, each property has a one-car garage and enough driveway for two vehicles. So therefore, each home will provide three off-street parking spaces, which exceeds the RSIS requirement of two spaces per dwelling for a three-bedroom home. And as I mentioned earlier. The site today is served by electric, public sewer, water, and gas, which is available. And we expect to make the same connections for the homes. The electric on this plan, as you can see, is, is overhead wires. There will be no utility easements, and it will be underground connections from the pole to the new homes. So the plans will be revised accordingly, and I think it's important to note that. And finally. It's not on this plan, but it is in our plan set, you, you see the new utility connections. Clearly, that will require some street opening. The applicant is willing to work with the township as required to appropriately repair the street as needed, as each home is built and each utility connection is made. And with that, Mr. Farrell, that concludes my, my engineering testimony describing the application.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anybody have any questions?
We have a front view of the, of these proposed residents, or no?
I can put that up, Mr. Savarice is going to be testifying to the. But yeah, certainly. Let me pull that up for you, Mr. Kudrick. We have a, a nice colored picture of that, and I'm sure Mike will want to see it for his testimony. But these are what, this is generally the streetscape colorized of the homes.
And they're one-story homes?
They're all proposed as one-story.
Patrick, did I hear you correctly, did you say the utilities to the residence homes will be going underground?
The electric, we want the electric to go underground, even though the plans show otherwise.
Okay, so, okay. Thanks.
No problem. That's the physical connection from the pole to the, to the home, just to clarify. We do have overhead right along the frontage.
And can you confirm the, the type of foundations? Will there be basements in these?
The, the, the type of foundations, Mr. Chair?
Hey, there are going to be crawl spaces. You can't, the water level's too high to have basements here.
Yeah, to, to echo Mr. McDermott, the, the water table is at best five feet below grade, but what we've seen is as shallow as four feet. So basements are not feasible, and we expect crawl spaces, but I'm sure Mr. Savarice will describe that if he needs to in further detail.
Great, thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions? Seeing none, Counselor, your next witness?
For its indulgence, one second.
Can I just jump in, Pat, you're going to testify as a planner too, correct?
I am. I probably should have mentioned that. I will, once Mister Savarys finished, I will. Conclude with my planning testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Michael Savarys, the architect.
Okay, I can't see him. Is he on camera? He is. Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Michael Savarys, S A V A R E S E.
If you could qualify, Mister Savarys.
Thank you. Good evening, Mister Savarys. You hold, uh, are you a professional architect?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in New York, New Jersey, about to be Pennsylvania, Florida, DC, uh, Virginia and Delaware.
Okay, and uh, do you have your own um firm?
Yes, the name of my firm is MSA Architects. We are at thirty-four Sycamore Avenue, Little Silver, New Jersey. We've been there for approximately five years. Prior to that, we were in West Long Branch and prior to that, our headquarters was in New York.
Have you testified in front of this or any other board?
I testified in front of Howell, probably about ten years ago. I've been testifying in front of Jackson, in front of Wall, West Long Branch, uh, Little Silver, Oceanport. Rumson.
Well, that's incidental.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, someone's gotta let me share the screen.
Do you need this, uh? There you go. You can go ahead and share. Unless you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to get back to the rendering. Okay, uh, this is reminding me that Patrick was showing and it's, we set that purpose in this way. This is how it is on the street. So from left to right, this is the houses that we plan to put, I think it's B A B, it says right here, B A C B. House E is on the corner. So that's where you see on the total right side is the elevation. On the corner, one corner of the house and the elevation of the salvage corner house. We tried to make them both address the corners as nice as possible by introducing a deck. And the last one is House D. All the houses are similar in plan. They range from an interior square footage. Of fourteen thirty-three for a house to. Plan E, it's fifteen eighty. The garages are about three hundred and eighteen square feet. Both ha- all houses have porches front and back, which relate to about a hundred and seventy square feet. The footprints range from thirty by fifty-nine to fifty-eight by thirty to thirty-six by fifty-two to thirty-six by fifty-three. The roof heights are all in the vicinity of sixteen nine to nineteen seven. As you can see, we purposely have them at different heights, so it gives the effect that these houses are not part of a. A cookie cutter development and they were, they were, they are over time and we tried to exchange the. Changed the aesthetic appeal from a prairie style to a craftsman style to a colonial style to a little bit of a modern style for the houses. With that said. To look at them each one individually, that's Lot B. So the porch is on the left side. That's House A, the porch is on the right side. It's got a a double back uh gable dormer. This is a House C. It has sort of a Dutch slap, overhang porch roof with a hip, different craftsman style door and front door. This is the corner house that has the wraparound porch and addresses both streets. And this is House D, which is on the other side. Um, to show you the houses. They are all single family houses, uh, and correct, they are on a crawl space because of the water table, but. They they lend to a nice pla- plan that's wide open. So typically the bedrooms are in the back. Uh, the. There's two bathrooms in each house, one for the two bedrooms and one for the master. And it's a wide open living room and a one car garage with a mechanical laundry room in the center of the house. Like I said, the houses range from fifty-nine to fifty-three and they're typically thirty. Well, the corner lot is thirty-six, put a different size of lots, but they're thirty feet wide. So that is House Type A. That's House Type B, again, the same type of plan, just a little bit different as far as the elevation and different as far as the depth. House Type C. Again, the same three bedroom layout reversed a little wider this time and a less in depth. So we have instead of a linear. Like on previous two houses, instead of a linear living space, it has more of a rectangular living living space. And I do it, all had to do with the shapes of lots. And that's House Type E. Um. I think with that said, I mean, it, I think it's a very nice project. I think uh Mister McDermott is taking what was an eyesore of a lot. That didn't belong there. I'm sure Patrick will get into the the land use planning of the of the project. But I think at the end of the day, we have good looking one story houses that fit the nature of the neighborhood that complement each other, if not the neighborhood itself. And don't look like cookie cutters.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing no questions? Thank you. Counselor, does that?
At this time, yeah, I'd like to call back this board.
Hey, Mister Ward, I remind you, you remain under oath.
Um, Mike, if you could stop sharing, I'm gonna.
Yeah, I'm doing that right now. Got it.
Thank you. Okay, so this is our, uh, we've prepared an aerial exhibit. Um, what you see is the the new site colorized in the center and uh, this rabano, I don't know um what the. The exhibit number of this is.
A eight.
A eight for the record. Um, so the similar um. Color scheme of the proposed uh subdivision and then this is in that Free uh Freewood Acres um section of town. As you can see. Uh, Route nine is off to the west here. And um, the point of this is to, you know, support my testimony with the development pattern, as I mentioned earlier, the neighborhood. Um. So as you, um, as it's been alluded to previously, we have um several C two variances, as Miss Bean pointed out in her review letter, that are all related to the. Application not proposing um the fifty foot required perimeter buffer for a major subdivision. Uh, as the ordinance stipulates setbacks um in a situation like this with a buffer are measured to the buffer limits. So uh, along with requesting relief from the ordinance for not proposing the perimeter buffer, um, we are seeking variance relief for front yard setbacks on all six lots. Um, side yard setbacks on the two lots, nine point oh two and nine point oh seven. Those are the sides. And the rear yard setback of three lots, which are the two in in middle ones and then um nine point oh three here, just by way of the geometry. And again, that's because of the deviation of not providing the fifty foot buffer and therefore not having um the setback to the buffer. The the proposed setbacks are to the perimeter. Uh, lot. So uh, as we know, the ordinance requires a fifty foot wide perimeter buffer on all major subdivision applications. And. And by way of this being a major subdivision, this application requires the buffer. Um, we feel that strict adherence to the buffer requirements for this application. Has an effect on this site as well as the immediate neighborhood and we feel out of character. Uh, as you can see here, like I said, Freewood Acres is a grid system, um, grid style residential neighborhood, um, nearly fully developed, as you can see. And this is essentially infill development. Um. Unlike more common major subdivisions, there is no new roadway or other common facilities that. That's associated with this application. We're proposing six block. New frontage on existing streets. Uh, we're seeking to continue the existing development pattern of the neighborhood onto this property. Um, and then the neighborhood, as you can tell in its surround, essentially does not have the any of the fifty foot buffers uh between the homes and the right of way and even between the homes themselves. So in lieu of the ordinance required buffer, we're proposing a ten foot wide series of evergreen plantings along the north side of the property. Again, this is intended to provide evergreen screening and separation between any neighboring rear yards and any of our proposed. Um, considering the neighborhood, as you can see, this property specifically and the zoning requirements, we feel that this is the best planning alternative. And this application. Um, the subdivision uh advances the purposes of planning in the following ways. This is an appropriate use and development. We're proposing a single family residential subdivision in the R fifty zone. Um, this is more appropriate uh than the current and former uses of the subject property. Um, with that large non-residential structure uh as the Russian club. The application secures safety from fire, panic and other natural manmade disasters. We have six new homes constructed to the latest building codes. Safer arrangement than it probably is today. Uh, the application provides adequate light air and open space. As I mentioned initially, the new lots do meet the the basic zone requirements for lot geometry, size, width, depth. And the setbacks, not considering the buffer, um, meet the zone requirements. Five of the six lots are oversized, um, providing even more light air and open space um than the ordinance requirements uh at a minimum suggest. Um, we feel this is certainly an improvement over the existing site conditions where we have a that large non-residential building. That has a setback, um, that's too close to East Fourth Street right of way. It's um, I believe it's within fifteen feet of the right. Uh, the application promotes the establishment of appropriate population densities, um, that will contribute to the well being of this neighborhood. Um, this. Purpose of planning ties in with my opinion about this being the best planning alternative for the property. Uh, subdivision like this without the required buffer is more in line with the prescribed density of the R fifty zone and the surrounding neighborhood, as you can see. A fifty foot perimeter buffer uh would limit the quantity of homes that could be built here. Um, lowering the density too much uh to be much less than what the zone suggests. Um, based on my analysis, it would eliminate two or three of these lots completely. Um, this subdivision as proposed today is a better utilization of the property, which we feel uh. Is how it was originally intended um by the R fifty zoning and the development of Freewood Acres. As uh Mister Savarys um showed on his uh color renderings of that that streetscape showing each of the fronts of the new homes. This application promotes a desirable visual environment. Um, we have a new series of modest, single family homes that'll anchor this corner of the neighborhood. And is a clear aesthetic improvement over the existing condition of the property. And finally, we feel the the application will conserve, if not improve, property values in this neighborhood. Um, for the negative criteria, again, I feel this is essentially an infill development. Where we are proposing single family lots that fit within the surroundings and comply with the zone requirements for lot geometry. The project as designed will fit in with and enhance the character of the neighborhood. Whereas providing the 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 required fifty foot buffer would be out of character with this neighborhood and deviate further from the potential density of the zone. We feel there are no impacts beyond what is expected in a single family residential neighborhood with this density, if any. Uh, instead, we feel that this is an improvement over existing conditions and this is enhancement to the neighborhood. So therefore, in my opinion, the proposed development would not cause substantial detriment to the public good, nor substantially impair the intent purpose of its own plan. Unbalanced, it's my opinion, but the benefits of this application substantially outweigh its detriments, if any, giving the board the ability to approve this application with confidence. And with that, Mister Farrell, that concludes my direct planning testimony.
Great, thank you. Okay, does anybody from the board have any comments or questions?
Mister Chairman. Uh, just to go back to Mister Ward's testimony, you said to comply, you would lose two or three lots. Do you, do you know more precisely, is it two or is it three?
It's. Uh, it's most likely to Mister Cuchero, um, but you know, one of the things that um the buffer, if with strict adherence with the buffer requirements. We would still need setback uh variances or we'd have deviations from the setback requirement. So um, I. I'll clarify and say two. And I want to stretch it. Thank you.
All I have right now, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any comments? Any of our professionals to make any comments?
Mister, can you take this down?
One, I just wanted to confirm, Mister Ward, do you agree to our technical comments?
I do.
And then the only other thing, um, I appreciate the curbing, the sidewalk, as well as the underground electric. The other thing I want to note is that currently East Fourth Street is under a moratorium. So you would be subject to those requirements in the event you um entered the roadway. Uh, while it was still under a moratorium to do these improvements.
And and I discussed that with the applicant, um, and we're well aware of that. So uh, we understand what the implications of road opening would be in this case, which is the the paving.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody from the board have any questions? Counselor, is that your 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 last witness?
Yes, it is. And on that, we'll uh submit.
Okay. Alright, then I'll open it up to the.
Just, Pat, can you stop the screen sharing so we can?
I'm sorry, yes, you asked that before. No problem.
Thank you.
Alright, Eileen, let's open it up to the public, please.
Okay, at this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public who have questions or comments regarding this application. Anyone who would like to address the board, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need audio and video. You will be sworn in and you need to give your name and address. Thank you. Once again, if there's any member of the public looking to ask questions or comment on this application, please use the raise your hand feature so we can bring you into the meeting.
We'll give it another thirty seconds, Eileen.
Okay. And that's the last call for any member of the public wishing to speak on this application. And I have no one raising their hand.
Okay, we'll close the public portion of this meeting. So uh, counselor, do you want to summarize?
Uh, I don't have anything necessarily more to add that uh Mister Ward and Mister Savarys have already eloquently testified to. I believe that this. Uh, subdivision application and the variance relief proposed for the buffer uh meet the uh. The the design requirements or the um, the the statutory requirements and also fit in. Uh, better with the neighborhood uh than the existing property. Um, Mister McDermott has uh. Expressed his willingness to comply with um what the board has recommended um in order to. Have this process uh proceed and um. I I believe that the exhibits, especially uh the aerial exhibit A eight, um, kind of speak to itself uh with regards to how the property and how the development will fit in. Uh, with the rest of the neighborhood. And uh, with that, I am going to submit.
Okay, great, thank you. So if nobody has any last minute comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, so that's a motion to approve preliminary and final major subdivision with ancillary variance relief.
So Paul.
Yeah.
I made the motion. I'm gonna second and I'd like to add some comments.
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
So. This has struggled for all of us that are familiar with both the east side and west side. That has struggled for many, many years. And over the past ten years, you have many residents in there redoing their houses, trying to fix things up. In fact, the existing structure that's there now is a complete eyesore and actually doesn't even fit in. But uh, they actually put a brand new metal roof on it years ago. I thought it was the biggest waste of money. That whole piece of property right there is is just abandoned and it's an eyesore. I like the the fact that they're coming in with with homes that we don't traditionally see. We see. Uh, that these homes are more affordable for starting off homeowners, uh, more affordable. Uh, and I think it's a, it's a very nice concept. It's a welcome addition to that neighborhood and absolutely will increase property values for others in it. Uh, living on the east side of the acres.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Okay, roll call, please.
Mister Bavai?
Yes.
Mister Dorado?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Leggio?
Yes.
Mister Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse? And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next gentleman.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Thanks for your time.
Good evening.
Alright, so, so with Mrs., uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Richmond is not here, so maybe we have no master plan update. And, uh, do we have any need to go to an executive session?
No, Mister Chairman.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
All in favor?
Alright.
Good night.
Have a great day.
Good everybody.